All right, let's call meeting order. Everybody has the minutes from the April 4th meeting.
Fourth and 12th.
Fourth and 12th. Yeah. Okay, motion by Brumeyer approved the minutes.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. All favor approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. All favor approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. For A, we have the 2016 This Summer Street Project Bid Recommendation. Mark.
You all should have before you a letter of recommendation for award of the 2016 Street Improvement Project. We recommend that the award go to Bectol Paving, who was the low bidder on the project. There's a summary of their bids, and you should also have a copy of the bid tabulations, as well as a copy of the notice of award. So the bids came in about $300,000 below our estimate, so I think they were pretty good on this.
You didn't see any strange or different with the quantities or any values?
No, no, we did find a couple small discrepancies, not on their bid, on others, but it did not affect the bottom line, so.
Okay. So, all right.
And then that bid included, of course, the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yes. And the 300 feet of curb over a mansion?
Yes.
Okay. The only thing I did ask Mark to take a look at is right in front of Crowe's City Value, where the water runs down the west gutter going into the ditch. That little slide where the water runs down that concrete pad is totally destroyed and broke up, and it's eroding the ditch side really bad. Ron, do you know, are we, is that someone supposed to take care of already?
Yeah, I talked to Thomas Lee last year about this, he said some local fill, and I think we can save the concrete and just get some fill underneath it, and the driveway can make sure of the waste of fill.
Some of those, because that concrete pad, I believe, is now broken into three big pieces.
Oh, it wasn't last fall.
Yeah, it's in bad shape.
And there's also one up by that tennis court, there's another drainage up there, it's pretty much the same way, it's hollowed out, I mean, have them take a look at that.
Okay. But I'm just gonna ask Mark to drop by and look it up before he leaves town, and if you guys want to, please. If something we can obviously, if we feel that needs to be done, we'll carry that straight up to do at the same time, but anyhow, so this is the recommendation, and if we want to approve this, we can do that this evening. Any questions for Mark? Anybody have any questions? Casey, go ahead.
Sunflower, Lane, and I guess you guys break that up to how much that suits the cost?
Um, we have that information, it's not broken up on here, but I recall it was about $250,000, is what I believe it was.
So then, so then it's with the current bids that it's?
Oh, with the current?
Yeah.
No, we did, okay, I see what you're saying. No, we did not break that out separately with these prices, but we can do that.
If it was only a small part, right, like under, under your, your, I guess, your estimate, right, bid, or?
Right.
So, but I can be, I can be wrong.
I wouldn't think so, but we can, we can break sunflower out, those quantities and everything, applying, using these prices and get you a number.
So, what was, is $300,000 under your estimate, the low bid?
Yes.
So, maybe $50,000, $50,000, or not even that, probably $20,000 cheaper than that could possibly even, you never know, I guess.
It's hard to say right off the top of my head, but yeah, we could check that easy enough.
Okay. Any other questions for Mark? By the end of the day, a motion.
So, Wolf.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Aye.
Rudemeyer.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Owenauer.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. For B. Oh, I'm sorry, Monty.
To go with that, we say a resolution. I've already risked contract in to them when we're authorizing the president and the auditor to sign the contract when it comes in.
Okay.
As part of the special assessment process.
Okay. Then we need a motion for that. Okay? Did everybody hear that?
No, I haven't.
Did that?
Did you want me to read the resolution?
Go ahead, yeah.
City of Hazen, North Dakota, resolution of worry contract for Hazen Street Improvement Project District 2016-01, be resolved by the governing board of the city of Hazen, North Dakota, as follows. It is hereby bound and determined that this governing board has heretofore cause notice of advertisement for bids to be made for an improvement for Hazen Street Improvement Project District 2016-01 of the city and has duly publiced, opened, and considered said bids received pursuant to said notice. Said improvement is hereby ordered to be constructed in accordance with the detailed plans and specifications approved by the city of Hazen on March 21st, 2016. It is hereby bound and determined that the lowest responsible bidder for the work materials and skill required for said improvement is Bectol. It is hereby bound and determined that the bid received from said bidder does not exceed the engineer's estimate prepared pursuant to North Dakota Century Code Section 40-22-10 by 40 percent or more. The commission president and the auditor of the city of Hazen are hereby conditionally authorized and directed to make an entry to a contract with said bidder on the part of the city in accordance with North Dakota Century Code Section 40-22-35 through 40-22-37, provided that said bidder shall execute said contract and a contract is bound in accordance with the provisions of North Dakota Century Code Section 48 and 1.2-10. They then adopted this blank date, a blank 2016.
We need a motion to approve. Motion by Brumeyer.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Rudemeyer.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Owenauer.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Monty, for reminding me to do that part. Okay, for B. For B, Search Project Pay Estimate, AJ, you wanna approach us on that, please, and give us a rundown, please?
Yeah, so we worked with Monty, and we had a recommended pay estimate, we did that last week, then all these extras came in again on Friday, so today.
From Tan.
Yep. So I just, I didn't get to them until today, so I looked over them and found out that most of them were already addressed in previous letters to the city, and I'm pretty sure that all of them have been included in extra payments to date. So I sent out that email to Monty, I think probably you have it in front of you. So we can just run through these one by one. The first request was dated 8/26/15, and they marked.
Yeah, do you have?
They don't, they won't have it.
Oh, they don't.
Oh, okay.
We got an email to us, so.
No, I made copies for you and Casey.
Wolf?
Okay.
Let's see if I can log this one. Okay, so those first two noted in that email, those are actually addressed to the RV Park Project, because that film material was used in building up the RV Park. So on October 9th, Mark had written a letter to Al, and Tan was CC'd on that, and that should've been paid for as a part of the RV Park Project, those two or less. The next one on the list is dated 8/1/15, and Mark had written a letter on August 28th, and that was Claim Number 17. That one, they were requesting 10 hours of excavating in the street to try to find those water means, as per plan. I was on site that day, and they were only working seven and a half hours. So we had rather written this recommendation, only paid them for 7.5 hours of work, and that should've been included in Pay Estimate Number Two, on a $38,000 worth of extras The next one on there, I think, is Claim 20, and the amount of $1986, right?
Yeah.
That one I'm still investigating, just because I need to find out for sure if Adam and Mike Dora looked into that, so that one, I'm not sure right now. The next four, 2-6 through 2-9, those were all addressed in, on another letter on the 9th of October, and we reduced, you know, kind of going back to the overtime hours, we recommended that we didn't pay overtime for all that, but we did recommend that those be included in Payestimate Number Four Extras, and that was in the full, and it was $30,254. And on this letter from October 9th, we recommended $22,180 be paid, and that includes these four extras that were submitted last Friday.
Okay, so we're gonna take action. AJ?
That's all I got for this, I just wanted to make sure that these were up to date, so.
Okay, Monty, questions?
Yeah, I guess left station five, you know, that's by the dike there, you know, there's like a control panel, we have, that's why I have some type of tans, name, I guess, right hand over, looks like a root or something like that, I think that was part of the older discussion station.
Okay, so there's a, there's an old panel that needs to be removed?
I'm pretty sure, if I hold on, right, is that panel still there?
I don't know whether it's been hit or not.
Either the panel, or else the word is still there.
Okay.
I'll drive over there.
Go ahead. Okay. Don't walk into that.
No.
Any other questions? So we'll see at the next meeting then, or?
Yeah.
First one else?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is that thing that fired, or is it the fire thing that helped the next move?
6A, West River Telephone Franchise Ordinance.
First reading that the minor change was approved at the last meeting, there were no responses other than thank you from West River Telephone, so I guess basically we would be ready to approve the secondary, then adopt this order.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Motion by Brumeyer to?
Second.
Approve, second by Wolf. Roll call.
Rudemeyer.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Owenauer.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. 6B, Rough Rider Electric Franchise Ordinance.
Mr. Himmel is here again, had some questions from Attorney Don, if he wants to.
Yeah, Pat, you have questions for us, or comment?
Well, I just requested some additional information, and other things, and I'm not going to write up, somebody even agreement, one, we'll get some additional information on, it won't affect between first and second reading, but we can still make the changes if necessary, so.
Okay.
I don't have any other issues in terms of the first reading.
Okay, all right, so that's them two pressing for, we can throw the first reading then, okay? All right. We need a motion to approve the first reading, okay?
So?
Okay, we have a motion by Hack to approve the first reading of Rough Rider Electric Franchise Ordinance.
Second.
Second by Stern. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Rudemeyer.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Owenauer.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. Thank you. All right. 7A, Purchase Option.
Steve? Do you have an option for you, option to purchase Lot 5, Lot 3, North Park Edition from Katie and Ellen Wise? I think you all had, got a copy of a map that's up there, they, there are two lots, privately owned lots, directly north of that, and they intend to, she told me they intend on buying those, so they'd end up with three lots up there, basically across the street from Brent's issue. Yeah, those two, see up here. Lots 3 and 4, there's a house up here, Jettman's got a house up here, and then 3 and 4, they're looking at, these are privately owned, and they're looking at buying those two, and then you have this one. The city still owns 6 and 7, and then 35 and 36 over here, so there's lots up there.
Okay.
And we did receive 10 percent deposit, too, as far as this application.
Okay, any questions for Steve or Mr. Weiss? Okay. We have to make a motion, approve the selling of it then, Steve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Brumeyer. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Brumeyer.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Owenauer.
Aye.
Motion passed. When do you plan on building?
We're hoping this fall.
This fall, okay.
Provided everything goes as planned, that's what our projection from the builders this fall, you know.
Good. Good luck.
Thank you.
8A, a couple things I talked to Williams today from Williams Builders, he has been in the area since last Thursday, has been having several meetings, I think he's met with Mark and K.L.J., as well as, he said he is hired, they've lined up a site contractor, they will, they will be on site for us, and, not for us, for him, and he's also, they're bringing in a site superintendent in May for that area, so they're hoping.
Are you okay from the banks?
Uh, this is for, no, this is for Williams Builders, for the housing development.
Okay.
Yeah, and Mark, were you guys are still talking about revising a couple things, is that correct?
Yeah, we're right now working on a platform revision, so we, I talked with Tim this morning, and we're looking for explicit direction on exactly what he wants to do. We know in general what he wants to accomplish, but how he wants to go about that is what we're trying to nail down, so, so we're hoping to get that taken care of here, and hopefully in the next couple weeks, get that reseminated to the city.
Thank you. And then this afternoon, we have Doug Burgum and Brent Sanford visit us, and there was an interesting discussion, and obviously they want our votes, and they, so they came and just kind of talked about their platform, and how they perceived the situation that we have here in coal country, and Hazen specifically, so obviously Doug says he supports energy and fights, wants to fight the EPA with a Clean Power Act. He did a couple times mention that if he were to stay on, or if he were to be voted in, that we'd still have Mr. Stengem as our attorney general, so we'd give the best of both worlds type thing, in his opinion, so, because I didn't know Wayne was, Stengem was right in the, the attorney general's right in the middle of his, his term. Thank you, Monty, yeah. So, it was good, they were here for about, over, an over hour. That's all I have for my report. Water, sewer?
We had a letter from Sweeney Control Companies out of Fargo about the water storage tank up there, and they are proposing to supply the following equipment and services for the above referenced project. Option one was one supply and install LCD level display on existing filter one control panel to display level of existing ground storage tank. One, on-site trip per installation setup and commissioning, price for that was $2,450. Option two, which contained a lot of the stuff that we'd already had, I don't feel that we need, that total summer idea was $4,100, and I would make a recommendation, I would go with option one, I make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Brumeyer to pull up option one, Sweeney Control. Where would that LCD display be at, to be honest?
Already on the water.
It'd be, oh, okay. And right now, we have no idea how much water's in there from day-to-day basis, but we know that there's enough in there to keep things pressurized to go downhill. All right. Another motion, to pull up option one. Second by Stern. Discussion.
So, I guess in our old, I guess, level, I guess, transportation paperwork or something?
Yeah, they had, they were actually in the yard flat quit last year, and we've been going back and forth, Adam and Eve, and all the baby's been in, I've been Adam and all the baby's been working with Sweeney to try and get the controls and the estimate, and that we got now.
Any other questions? Kate, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Rudemeyer.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Owenauer.
Aye.
Motion passed. Any else?
That's all I have.
That's it? You can, Streets?
Except Dick is, Dick is in classes right now, so, writing his own song.
Then he's, okay, and Heather just started? All right. Are we seeing any more springtime soft spots come, pop up at all, in the Streets?
Not really, there's some puddles that we filled as we're patching, but.
Good. Finance, busing.
Um, we just had a fundraiser on Friday, the busing department did, they had the Luther ladies in, and their profit was about $3,800, it was a volunteer event, it was nice, and that's all that I have.
Speaking of the bus barn, where are we at with?
Still more paperwork from Austin today, but they haven't started any construction.
Police, fire?
Nothing for police and fire, but I do have for Forest Street, all you have a copy of them. Kind of a neat little jingle for Hazen, Hazen, North Dakota's name to 2015 Tree City USA and the Arbor Day Foundation in honor of its committed, commitment to effective urban forest management, so, kind of leaving a feather in our hat, I guess.
Are we still getting the little placards, Monty, to, okay, very good. Have you talked to Sam recently, is she planning on doing any more work, or what's her?
Uh, I haven't talked to her since she was back, she was back on, in Spring Bay, she was working, um, I haven't chatted with her, said anything, I don't think she's been in Ash Murphy. And she's still kind of shooting for that, what was the name of the, May, yeah.
And she's not school, but, but on the day.
Okay. So May 13th is the day, the, the, the proper date?
Yeah. And I think she's still planning on doing that, Monty, that, with NSU and the tree and getting volunteers from the school.
It's the last ever.
Okay.
And, I guess that's all I have, I see they lifted the fire ban, so that's about it. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you. 11A, Bus Advisory Board Appointment.
Casey, we have a five-person board, it's a five-member board for the Bus Advisory Committee. We were short a member for almost the better part of a year. After our last Bus Advisory Meeting, there were recommendations to contact Heather Klein to see if she was interested, I did contact her, she is willing to accept the term on the Bus Advisory Board, so, direct us to your approval.
Take a motion to approve Heather Klein for the Bus Advisory Board. Okay, motion by Brumeyer.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Rudemeyer.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Owenauer.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. And last thing in business is weed spraying quotes. Monty?
I had sent them out to you, I had contacted three different individuals, companies for spraying, you should have them there before you, just a matter of who you want to offer it to.
Does that include the Pioneer Home?
It does include Heritage Park and north side of Main Street, yes.
Okay.
Not the Pioneer Home specifically, but.
Right. Okay.
You have three bids, Don Gilinski bid was $3,190, bid from Todd Walston Home Custom Turf and Landscape, $6,235, and Joe Green Lawn Care, who bid $7,640. And Joe Green Lawn Care, who bid $7,640. Ooh, yeah. Don Golinski did it last year.
And they all have the same square footage?
They were all different, same square footage.
Yeah. That's amazingly different pricing between the first one and the block two. And he did it last year, so. Okay. What's the board want to do?
Motion to award Don Golinski.
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second by Brunnemeyer. Roll, um, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Brunnemeyer.
Aye.
Stern.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolfenauer.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. And approval of bills. So, Monty, can you give us a simple update? What have you heard of that kitchen on the countertops and stuff?
I, I already had given you a copy and, uh, let you see the thing. I did get a quote from Jeff Banister finally after three years of asking people. He quoted us a price of $5,822 to, to put new laminate on all the kitchen countertops in the kitchen. Uh, this goes back to after the Centennial, the Centennial Committee donated funds back with a request that that be looked into in all of the suggested projects. So he did give us color samples, but he did pick one out of there. And then that's how he came up with the pricing as far as the laminate itself.
Okay. So do you want to decide for the next meeting?
I'm sure, I recommend you get into the due amount.
Yeah? And we can, we can attack this now if you want to. If you want to wait and look at what Monty has for, if you want to look at it now or take care of it now or, or whether that's fine.
Well, it's been three years of asking for bid and we thought of that one, I guess.
Yeah. And it'll be a little bit less because there won't be any tax on it.
Well, $412 in tax? No, 122.
And that's just on the counter, counter cap?
That's just to do the countertops and that's what it is.
How much is, of that is Centennial money?
The Centennial funds we got back were eight, was $8,000.
And we spent a little bit of that on nice?
Yeah. And we did, they escaped and they wanted this one.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Jeff Banister's.
Okay, we have a motion by Brunnemeyer to accept the Banister bid for the countertops.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Brunnemeyer.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolfenauer.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. And bills, any questions on the bills or anything outstanding, Monty, that you've noticed?
Motion.
We have a motion by Hack to approve the bills. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Brunnemeyer.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Wolfenauer.
Aye. Motion passed. Me and Jerry. Thank you.